Entertainment, right?
Yeah.
All right, according to Apple at six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting to water. All those tenants, Swenson, Stewart, Benton, Billy, town administrator, Seaver, Randy. Mr. Carter is out sick this evening. While not great, but. Yeah, so let's quickly review the agenda. They can see that we have any notes to approve. Well, it's time for public comments. No old business and new business. And I think we are starting with the Andover Select Board and S A U discussions. Sam and Randy are here. Talk with us. Roland will not be doing the update on transfer station, discussion regarding the AM Barbatory Roller. I think Les has some information on that source. The assessing tax map, executive finance, all for plummeting budgets. Select Ward duties and responsibilities, current policy, town administrator job description, highway department admission statement, and highway supervisor job description. All these items will be done separately in work sessions, and this is just our final thought ahead since Simon Baylord. Before all that, it's been asked that I think Wendy's here with something regarding elderly tax credits. We'll move that after the discussions with Sam in York. Got it with Sam. Signatures I've packaged here. One is a veterans credit. The payroll manifest for $32,784. Cables manifest $646,645.35, of which 595. Part of the reason we're having a little discussion tonight. The property maintenance contract for long going for next year, which we talked about having that be a two-year or agreement that we would agree to this next year. And then it's falling here. I believe bringing that back out to dead. We have that in the package, and there is no increase from this year to next year on that. So the previous year they did increase by 3%, which seems reasonable. They've gone two years the same. Municipal works on agreement. I'll mention that. I've already signed it. And then the final portion of the R and D paid in Jamaica Street of $101,098. I don't believe we have any non-public items. If that's why you would have a movement, gentlemen. Any other agenda items for board members?
No. A quick conversation about a plan to plant flowers at the beside the library ramp.
Okay. Then, since we have no minutes to approve, we'll go to call the comments.
Mr., I wanted to talk about a section of Kearsarge Mountain Road, the class six portion that the town has upgraded physically. And my concern there is that there was no due process to make that physical change. Not sure if it was probably what's in that regard.
Well, my understanding of course that was done is a class five road up to very top.
Class five ended at Gary Curry's driveway. And so the town over the years, there was a select board over the years. So defined all the roads in town was done first, by knowledge, in 1999. Then it was 2000, and then formally adopted on April 4th, 2005. And Kearsarge Mountain Road was defined as begins at Sillyville Road across from Powers Lane, proceeds southerly uphill to its end is that classics Dawes Road. And then the note is from the last residence to Dawes Road, Kearsarge Mountain Road is class six. So the section of road that the town has upgraded was class six.
The states, they're recognizing that as a classified road.
Yes, the state can add now. The state actually has no control over classification of town roads, except the town phone.
But one of the reasons why we upgraded it, Mark, because we were under the understanding it was a classified road, because you can't subdivide properly on the class six road.
It's not. It's a class six road. So the subdivision was done there was done at Lee with a variance from that specific requirement back in the eighties. It was a long time ago, but that is class six. The fact that it had not been maintained in decades basically clarifies that it's class six. State statute is clear on that. So that section of road is class six. And despite the fact that the town has physically upgraded it, it still is a class six road from Gary Curry's driveway all the way up to Dawes Road. That's just, that's the way it is. The lack of maintenance and the fact that that's the way the board, prior boards have defined it as recently as May 3rd, 2021. I don't know if you were on the board at the time, but the board at that point just basically made some minor revisions to that prior listing that was done in 2005. But Kearsarge Mountain Road is still defined as class six from that last driveway, Gary Curry driveway up to Dawes Road. So.
My understanding is that it went to Dawes Road to the last residence.
No.
The last residence would be the cabin on the right.
Well, the class, so the road is defined as begins at Sillyville Road across from Powers Lane and proceeds southerly uphill to its end at the class six Dawes Road. And then the note is from the last residence to Dawes Road, Kearsarge Mountain Road is class six.
Right, but the last resident is on Dawes Road.
No, from the last residence on Kearsarge Mountain Road to Dawes Road. It's not talking about the house, the camp that's on Dawes Road. That's on Dawes Road. This is defining Kearsarge Mountain Road. From the last residence to Dawes Road, Kearsarge Mountain Road is class six. That's the official designation. And to change that, the state doesn't have any control over it. The only control the state has over town roads is if they take a state highway and reclassify it as a town class five highway, which they did with Agony Hill Road some years back. That's the only control the state has over town roads and classification of town roads. So basically, that is a class six road. It was a class six road. The section that the town has upgraded is still a class six road, short of either the board going through a layout process, which requires public hearing, notice, and the like, or town meeting action, which is historically how town road and Andover maintain classifications. But I also would like to point out RSA 72, excuse me, 231, 29. Dates that betterment assessments are against abudders and those serve. So whenever a road is physically upgraded, the cost of constructing, reconstructing, or repairing such highway, streets, roads, or travel ways shall be assessed by the selectmen against the owners of property abutting or served by such facilities in amount not exceeding the entire cost of constructing, reconstructing, or repairing the same. So whatever the town spent up there pursuant to state law should be charged to that property law. And that's, and it doesn't say may. The statute says shall. That's 231, 29. So I guess my point is that the action that the town took to simply upgrade that road would contrary to state statute. You might want to talk with Matt about how to success, you know, because what you've done now is not legal.
Okay, make a note to talk to Matt. What were you meaning by Mark's current Wendy?
I pulled the latest copy off the town's website this afternoon of road names.
Okay.
And there you go. I printed that again right off the town's website, Malcolm. This afternoon, I happened to have a copy of the one that was adopted back in 2005 because I wrote it.
Well, did the town, did the town meeting ever declare that as a classic road?
It was a third maintenance. It hasn't. Well, let's put it this way. It hasn't been maintained in decades. That's that key road has not been maintained in decades. The mere fact that it has not been maintained for five years automatically reverts it to class six, but in decades since that road has been maintained. I mean, unless you have any, do you have any idea when last time a section of road was maintained by the town?
No.
And we've been plowing it?
Just the Gary's House.
Yeah, it was Gary's House.
Right. And that's the, that's the last residence that's defined in the loop. It doesn't have a last place. It's the last residence. I doubt about him. Yeah, by name, which the last. Historically, town meeting has weighed in on changing classification of town roads. I mean, that's the state statute. There is another process the board can take, which requires a public hearing and it's a more elaborate process.
So we will need to have a discussion on it. I mean, it's honest. We use that as a representation. It's understood.
Yep.
May have said.
So there shouldn't be a copy of this book in the office. There is. I would encourage all the board members to take it home one weekend and read through it because it is full of valuable. This one was published back in probably early 2000s. So the municipal association might even have it updated version.
David Vergey, Max, probably three years old.
Okay.
Or so.
Listen, I'm going to take responsibility for this whole thing because Bob Ward came in front of the planning board when I was the executive. And he wanted to sell part of the property because it had been subdivided at that time. We thought that the property, you could not subdivide property in the answer unless it was a classified road.
Not true. That's if that varies from town to town. And again, it's my recollection that he had gone to the town to get a variance for that when he did the subdivision decades ago.
Because he was in process. Remember that? You were chairman of the board then?
In the year?
Yeah.
Well, well, regardless, we don't need any. So this is a great reference because it talks about all kinds of road issues. The board ought to have some knowledge of.
I think the Aunt Chumby also had the one day course.
Different, yeah. Could present that book, actually.
Usually in the springtime.
Yeah. Usually right after town meeting, the new board members did. And I can give this right to you. Two lawyers, Mr. Class. That's how two of the lawyers teach it. Then right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it.
Again.
I noticed that the transfer station, there's a new paper recycling container. Different company. And I haven't seen the change in company name in the select board minutes, or I haven't heard anything. And I wonder if that was a select board decision.
No. I know Roland has been working though on trying to negotiate different contracts, right? Recycling companies or whatever. So.
With the board.
Yes, with the board. Right, right. We've charged him to run the transfer statement during this certain period. So he has been talking to different sites. I didn't know there was anything out there. I'm surprised to hear that. Perhaps that was part of the fortune night.
It's the one as you're driving in. It says recycling associates on it. It's the big. Yeah, I literally drive right towards it when you go on the transfer.
I have brought that.
Two weeks.
I brought that to Roland's attention that the container that was taken out of there we own. And I said, I understand that they want to put their own container, and that doesn't mean they take our container off site. He mentioned something about repairs being done to or something.
No. So again, I won't speak on behalf of Roland, but what Roland explained to me was that recycling associates is a new company that we haven't contracted with before. I don't know if there is a formal contract that has been entered into with recycling associates or not. However, what happened was, as Jim said, the one compactor that was there that does belong to the town of Andover, Cycling Associates came in, it was full, so they dropped off the black one that you see now with the recycling associates on it. And they took Andover's compactor down to their facility in Nashville, an empty day. And my understanding is it's just sitting there in their yard, hopefully just sitting there in their yard, not being used by some other town. And when this compactor fills up, they'll bring ours back and take the black one home and presumably just keep flip flopping, and that saves on trucking costs.
But the Janice question, there's not been a contract this one brought to the select board.
Not that we've seen. And that's a gray area for sure.
We, we have a suggestion. Get Jim.
Just a note, the nominee for the empty seat on the state Supreme Court is someone who is a lobbyist based at the joint Casella. And I'm sure if he were elected to the Supreme Court, he would have to cut ties. But again, Casella is the company that is trying to, you know, increase landfill sizes. They have some input on trash coming into New Hampshire from especially Massachusetts. Just a note.
Well, this company with this container now is not Casella.
I'm not talking about the new tank.
We have talked to Casella, and I think that we basically said that we didn't want anything to do with them.
That remains.
Because of the fact that we realize that they have gone into other small towns and really hammered them after their two-year contract was up.
It's ongoing work. Roland is looking at different contractors to try to get the best deal for the town and the best incentive.
I agree with that, but it's not a very good company.
I'm talking about Casella. I'm just talking in general things at the transfer station. Nothing's been decided. Once he's got some proposal opening back to the board, we'll talk about it.
So I just wonder, because I was going to say the same thing. I'm a bit concerned that it looks like there was some kind of a contract. If you can't, Roland can't do a contract on his own.
No, no.
The board has to.
That's, that's what's right.
There can be no piece of equipment sitting in that yard without a contract. That, I'm just putting it out there because I'm, I just, I'm uncomfortable with this. And that's, I'll just leave it at that. There isn't no.
Thanks for bringing it forward, Jim. Anything else for call of comments? Let's move on into the session with the S A U. Sam.
Thanks, guys. So I had a conversation with, with Dawn. He had reached out about the payment. And so we had a kind of a disparity complementing him to give you guys. There's a lot of information. If you need readers, or if you don't need readers, you're going to need to act as trying. I know. I didn't want to hand you guys, you know, five pieces of anything. Break it down. So I didn't bring binoculars, unfortunately. So really, the top section is kind of the history, just went back to 2022 of the initial estimate, what the school budget was, and then the revised revenue in May, which typically comes after the DOE 25 is out and the, you know, DRA does that thing. You've had your town meeting. And then the revised revenue will depend on really once the audit comes out, how much you can turn back to the town or Randy jump in at any point. And so there are the monthly payments. There was a few years ago that the second assessment letter was not sent out correcting it. So that led to an open payment of $600,000, which we then corrected that in 2024. That's why there was such a steep decline in the revised monthly in that particular. And so after Dawn and I spoke, Randy kind of crunched some more numbers, and we came up with a revised payment that I offered Dawn. And that was, that's in red, a 57200. And then in that same top box, we just recently received an update from the National Hampshire Department of Revenue. And if we put those numbers in, that new revisal will be about 572 instead of 595. So all we do when we design these, and I say we, I haven't done yet, but my God, for two months. So is we take the numbers that the state gives us. We enter it into their calculation, and then it gives us an estimate, right? Where it's an estimate in the spring that brings us until the DOE 25 is complete, and then the state sets a tax rate sometime early November. And then we send out the other assessment letter. So I sent on the next box down.
Before you.
Sure.
Before you leave the first box, so the 572 or the 57200?
Yeah.
Now, that's based on an 11-month payment schedule?
10.
That by kind of.
Yeah, because you've already made one. Yes.
So one of our questions would be, our way to make this into a call to us. So that word monthly from a cash flow point, it may be a better way for us to. So just to let that game on.
Okay. Glenn, the next box really just goes to all the numbers that the state gives us. The first one right beneath the gray, the 2026 estimate. And then the one below it is the one that we just received, I think, 10 days ago. So those were just the differences in the numbers and the reason why the two payments were about $2,000 off as far as revision. So just trying to give as much info as I can. And I know it's a lot of information that you're kind of digesting quickly.
Well, but it looks like the adequacy is switching.
Yes. Yeah.
So there's been two years in a row of a pretty steep drop in adequacy payments from the state this coming year.
And that's based on their 4,000 something.
Yes, but so we have sort of a perfect storm that brushes small districts like Andover. We have declining student population, which that's down in number. We have a drop in our students who receive free and reduced lunch, which although that's a good thing, it's not from an adequacy standpoint because we get additional money for students who are free and reduced lunch, students. We have an increase in special ed costs, which again, most of those are not something that we can say, oh, let's just not do that. We're statuteually obligated to take care of that. And if you look at those numbers over in the right-hand column, you know, we have 178,000. We also have above in total is an extraordinary needs room, which is going away. So that puts us over 200,000 less in adequacy money, you know, for this coming year. You know, and you can see the enrollment since 2019, that's a pretty steep drop when you look at the K-12 total. You know, we're looking at, you know, 75 kids over that same time period. You know, 75 kids times four grand or thereabouts is, you know, that adds up as well from that adequacy standpoint.
Like 75 is 2019 and 2024.
Yeah.
The total.
And it looks like this year, you know, we're going to have another slight drop in the K-12 population. We have about 64 at the high school and right around, it'd be similar at Anar elementary middle school. You're right in that 163, 152 range. You know, but we are looking at another drop of seven, eight, nine, nine kids, which although it's not huge, it's still going in the wrong direction from an adequacy standpoint.
You don't have any indication as to whether those are kids that are now grabbing vouchers and going elsewhere, or whether it's actually a aging population or?
Unfortunately, the way that like homeschooling notification is in the state, they don't have to tell us anything. The one thing we can look at is home sales and things like that, but I don't know if any of you have looked, but the cheapest house that's listed for sale in Andover is 544,000. There aren't families moving in with kids when the cheapest house is 544,000. It's just those aren't the people buying, not that there's a lot of houses anyway, but that's not going to be a family with three or four kids moving in. So I think when I was talking about that perfect storm, all of these things are working against us.
And how about the Supreme Court decision? Is there any word on how that's going to shake out or?
The Claymont decision back in 1993.
Well, now I'm not going back that far.
There's a difference between the losses. This one attached the dollar amount to it, that they're not going to do anything in this fiscal year, whether something comes up to force their hand in the next fiscal year. That could be a game changer. Obviously, we're almost doubling the adequacy. We're up for around $7,300. That would be huge because that would just come straight up right off of this total, and that bill would drop down considerably. So that would be huge. So that's one of the reasons that we talk with legislators where they're actually going to have something in Andover, and I'll let you know once they they book it here. And that's a sort of a chat session on how we can talk to the folks in the legislature that from our towns and our person, our regions to kind of hammer home at this point. So they're doing one in Merrimack Valley coming soon, and they told me that Andover is going to be on the list as well. So certainly I'd let you know when those dates are. Let's get some people in the room.
Randy, where is all the money going from the state lotteries and so forth? It's supposed to go in this education.
It all goes in education. The problem is that it goes into a fund that they've now taken $100 million of it towards EFAs, which again hurt small towns because not only are we not getting the adequacy because they go elsewhere, they're also getting five grand. So this is not. The words I'm about to speak do not represent the Andover School District of Merrimack. This is my personal opinion. You know, if you have folks that were going to Proctor, they've already made that decision about a Proctor. They're already going to Proctor. The EFA law gets changed, so they don't cap income. They just get a check for five grand. There was never any thought of going, that's five grand that's coming out of that same fund that's supposed to fund public education. And that number is about $100 million. There's about 100 SAUs in the state. If you give me the magic wand, I give a million dollars to every SAU. Million dollars would be quite a bit for any board to come off of that. And not that it would have to be broken down that way, but when you try to put that into it, there's about 100 SAUs. There's $100 million going towards EFAs. That, you know, the idea behind it is to increase competition. But there's no competition. There's no level playing field. So that's where I think the, you know, it gets into trouble, that argument. It's kind of a straw man argument as it goes.
And the other question, how much is specialized going up this year? Do you have any idea?
We don't know as far as the overall cost, but we don't see some of the big spikes. We're hoping Julie Goddard has been great. He's been working very closely with folks there, looking at, is there anyone, and we do this annually anyway, that's really digging in, do we have an outplacement that we can, we can bring back? Is there an outplacement that we can send to Merrimack Valley that's much more affordable than other locations? We don't have a ton of kids, but again, in such a small district, if we have 160 kids, I'm now making up numbers on that. Let's say there's eight, right? That's, eight's a pretty small number. Eight would be a really small number in Merrimack Valley, but eight is 5% of the kids at Anar Elementary Middle School. Like we're talking about somewhere around 160 kids. So. You know, but we're definitely looking. I don't, we don't see any huge. You know, we had a slight uptick in transportation costs, you know, because special ed transportation. That's the, that's one thing that's out of control. That's all aside business. You have to do certifications. You need to get some vans and get some people to drive. I see seven people right there. We could get a pretty good company going. The kids are great. All you need is a van. You're going to, I'm retiring at the end of the chair.
Sure. Take the trust away.
We don't see any major, like we haven't had folks move in that are automatic, uh, out of district placements to my knowledge.
We're not going to have the increase we had last year. What number had the increase we had last year?
No, I don't foresee that.
This is our certificate. The the number that you budget is based on.
What we know.
Almost actuarial, it's, you don't, well, you don't know what you're gonna know.
Right, right.
You don't know that a kid may move in or him who sends a buys that five million dollars, but they've got two disabled children or. Just maybe not disabled, but they need a program. We don't know that, but you have to account for that.
We have, well, we budget for what we know, and we don't add things to it saying, well, what if? So we don't put extra money in saying, what if, so we say, all right, this is what we know, we have for next year, so. For instance, if we had someone in a preschool program that, you know, was part of a program that we try to identify students before they enter school. If we know that a kid is coming in, and this isn't the case, I'm just giving a for instance. We might say, okay, we know that we're gonna have a student with, you know, some special needs that's gonna be coming beginning of our next year, because we've identified them as a preschool kid. We would put that into the mix, but we don't add anything saying, what if, we just say, and it's eighteen months ahead of time, right, like, as as we're making the budget. Like, already, you know, Sam's working on the D O E twenty-five. And then he needs a break from that spreadsheet, and he says, let's jump to another spreadsheet, and we. We get together and we start, you know, looking at, looking at the budget.
That special education fund that we started is still there, right?
Yes, yeah. So the idea, that, that's what we like to, like to keep building that up.
Well, I was just gonna say, because does it still tap off at one twenty-five? At one twenty-five, it's gone higher.
No, it's up to two hundred thousand, if I remember your source. So, you know. That's one of those funds that. Even though it's like, hey, there's two hundred thousand, let's take it, that would be short sighted, I think, you know. Even even though we're talking about a small, so I think having half a million dollars in there, or maybe even a million, it's not going anywhere, it's earning good interest. And when you, if you do have a family that moves in and they have, you know, two out placements, is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, that was the idea when we set the fund up was, in case that's an error, it should happen.
Yes.
Same with the high school tuition fund.
Right. And that number is going down, both fortunate for you and unfortunate, right, as from the adequacy standpoint. You know, it's a bad thing, but you're also not sending, you know, that's bigger check to to Merrimack Valley for high school tuition.
Yes, that's way from the final numbers.
Yeah, that's.
So one of the. You know, so a bunch of changes, it's like finally counting this, it's not, it's not a business for. So at the end of the year. Let's say you have an excess, which happens, where does that go?
So if you look up to that top box, when you see the revised revenue, that wasn't, you know. From the state like, hey, we decided, you know, we have this extra money, most of that is from the fund balance that automatically just gets added to that. To the adjustment, so when Sam stuff puts in the the D O E twenty-five, it's going to have. Some sort of fund balances. Let's say, let's say it's two hundred and fifty thousand, that two hundred and fifty thousand is going right to that, and that's why the revised letter in December. Is going to lower that bill, I mean, we hope it's. Honestly, it's not going to be, I'd love it to be a million dollars, and then have you, you know, spread that out over the next six payments and and drop that monthly payment. So that money goes immediately to that, so. You know, some people phrase it as it gets turned back to the taxpayers indirectly, as it goes off that taxes. Right, you know, directly from, you know, here is the excess, it's going right to that change in the assessment. Letter, and that's why that comes out in December.
So any thoughts as to what that free balance is, or what it's projected to be?
At the October board meetings, Sam will have a pretty decent number.
We've got more on the board.
I've heard that. We're not really stealth wise.
Well, I mean, that will be helpful, like, when I looked at these numbers before, Donna gave us, not issues, like, you know, they certainly, the, the. That's made tax rate of eleven dollars, that's status, which is about eleven twelve, but at eleven eighty, that's an eighteen percent increase. And even if we just flat budgeted the rest of the town's budget, that's a twelve percent increase in our taxes. We need to start talking about, I mean. We collectively, the school board, the slide board, and with the public that. Come December, you may, may stay. Ten, twelve, fifteen percent, and increase your taxes after you just had the ones last year. And, you know, you can't, you can shrug it all you want, it's not gonna go down easy.
I think Susan, her idea last year, when she says she understands being a retired teacher, that you have to keep the staff. But if the population's dropping, then the staff should be dropping with it.
Some of our staff, Jim, to be honest with you.
And it's not a linear function, it's.
Right.
So if you've got thirty kids and you drop to twenty-eight, you don't drop a teacher.
No, if you have.
Twenty or fifteen.
If you have two hundred and seven kids and it drops to one sixty, that's a lot dropped. Anyway, I'll keep my motion.
I do think we're very interested, though, in changing from ten months to twelve months, just from, it doesn't change.
It was eleven, so it'd be, we have a receipt at one, but we can look at that all, but that's all.
Yeah. Does that would just help us, it doesn't change the top line, the bottom line, if we don't look at it, but it would help us, you know, how we pay for it, you know.
Well, because it is such a large part of our monthly bill, six hundred and something thousand, seven sixty thousand this month, of which.
Yep.
We can reduce that, because we reached points in November, December, and also May, June. Where we have to look to the state to get a, yeah, that could help us avoid that.
Yeah, we can, we can start to talk, I'd have to talk to. The bookkeeper certainly about a cash flow and what that would look like.
I mean, either way, you still get your payment.
Yeah.
I mean, we know we're obligated to pay for it, you know, it's just, it helps us. Or we make lump sums rather than this tax.
And again, in the event that we we don't have the cash right now to continue making the five hundred ninety-five or even the five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollar. Payment a month, I I don't know what what the plan is for the next. Three, four months here that, until we get our next tax, what what happens if the town says, sorry, Sam, we. I can't get your check this month, I don't have it, because we literally don't have it. What what can the school do? Is there a?
The school can't do anything, the town can do whatever, I don't know what the. The tax ladder of us, I'm hunching above my weight class, trying to even come up with what the phrases are, but we don't have any. Way to raise my read on the town gives us support. And the the tax collected money, so whatever, some sort of tax.
Tax anticipation notice.
Yeah.
What happens if you run into the, how many towns are gonna run into the same situation at Claremont soon?
Well, I think that just got deeper today, because there's some criminal charges potentially, so. But I'll tell you, as far as districts being, you know, you've probably seen the the trouble in Merrimack Valley last year. Their, you know, M V is probably gonna still be at the end of, you know. When we close the books on F Y twenty-five, probably seven hundred and fifty in the hole. That's happening more and more around, because the state keeps on pulling, this isn't. Abnormal, this, I mean, in Andover, it hurts more, but this is dropping and it's happening, and. The. Transportation costs are going through the roof, there was just something on W M U R, you know, even special ed transportation, they can't get bus drivers. We just had the bus routes cut down in Andover. I don't know what we're gonna do about that in either district here, it's for student in Merrimack Valley, they have their own buses. So there's a few different things in many districts. I know Franklin's in that position, Pittsfield's in that position, Alton's in that position, where they're, they're in the hole and trying to figure it out.
Now, bus contracts be going up a bit next year?
The bus contract is for three years, so.
Be going up a bit after that?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the problem, Jim, is it's hard to find people to get on it.
Oh, I understand that, leave it.
And and it's not, it's not like fifteen years ago where there were negotiations. If, no, this is the price, because we know we're the only show in town. You know, when there's, we need special ed transportation, we call five, ten different providers. And that's one of the things that the state doesn't say, this is the cost of this. They can charge whatever they want, and if we go through ten different companies and only one of them can provide a driver. We're. We're being recorded, so I'll, you know.
My mercy.
Yeah, thank you for, the fact that you're the voice of reason, Jim. But, you know, we'll do that, and it's, you know, six hundred dollars a day, you know, so it's. It's a, it's a widespread, this is not a just Andover problem, it's not just an M V problem. Here, Saj had their own, they were gonna close some schools, and they had people, you know, that that showed up and, you know, voted to make sure that wasn't happening, but. It's, it's all around, that's why there's things happening at the state level that they have to change how how the funding occurs.
Just a question. You mentioned that the state keeps dropping its.
Yeah, adequacy, yeah.
Adequacy. Do you get the feeling, as a school superintendent, that. Well, that is, which is, by and large, prestate. Is doing this on purpose in order to cut public education?
My lawyer advised me not to answer that.
The state's not providing that. So I understand that there's lots installed, especially with that special edge. But if they're not providing the money that we're supposed to. How can they mandate this stuff? Do you see what, and if we're not gonna accept it? And we say, all right, we want our town budget to be seven million dollars, and we don't accept it. Then should the school come up with their own? Well, like me, that, you know, saying, okay, yeah, we have a special ed, you know, we have to do this, kind of like the family, but I'm.
I think they're kind of mixing. What I was saying, probably from the mist.
Well, like, you get federal funds, and they're mandated, they said, in order to get these funds, you have to do that slightly.
Right.
My question is, is if the state is is not giving us accurate money. Then.
We still have to meet those requirements.
Yeah, it's, but so there's like unfunded mandates, right, so there's. There's some federal requirements that we have to do in terms of special.
Years ago, the Fed just started reneging on funding those, and said it's gonna be the state's responsibility. And then the state has kind of found other ways to decide what was adequate and whatever, and that's. What these lawsuits have have been about, and if you, I thought you were at the presentation they had down in Merrimack with the.
I I I was, I was. And I under, I understood that, I I guess my question is, is if you can only accept that money. How can the state tell you what to do? In other words, if we just say, okay, and we're gonna raise seven million dollars, this is gonna go. I can think of a question, years, this is what's gonna go for your school, okay? And you do what you want with that seven million dollars, make sure your kids are educated, make sure the ones that need it get it with no mandates. Is, is that possible?
No, because part of the mandates come from the federal government, not the state.
But you don't accept it, anybody from the state or the federal.
When it comes from the federal government.
We get, we don't get a lot of money from the Fed, we get a little money from the state, we get about.
I think there is no.
That we get about four thousand dollars from the state per student, and it costs about twenty-three thousand dollars to educate. A student in the state of Hampshire, so that, that. Difference is what we've got to come up with as taxpayers in Andover.
Well, like I asked you, I went to that thing in Merrimack Valley, I was totally shocked that we five percent of the law rate goes into education. And if we have that, when we were talking, that is one thing that should really be increased to at least fifteen or twenty percent.
Talk too loud, because I think it was decreased.
I, I'm sorry, I was just wanting to say.
And the, you know, the lawsuit is only dealing with the state money, so on the federal side of things, back in nineteen seventy-five, when I D E A was passed. They said they were gonna pay forty percent of all special ed costs, that number has never risen above eleven percent. So, you know, when we think about, you know, we we say the state, but. It's the federal government, if they funded forty percent, a big chunk of special ed costs come down, that comes right off of the the bottom line for. For a school districts. But there, you know, and that eleven percent, they haven't did that in a long time, we did have the one bit of good news. They finally promised to pay eighty percent of the extraordinary special ed costs, so if it's above three and a half. Times the per pupil cost, then they'll pay eighty percent of that cost. Which means, you know, so you're paying, say, four times the cost of, so let's call, let's go with easy math, twenty thousand. Times four, that's eighty thousand, so if you're paying eighty thousand, they'll pay. Back eighty percent of the amount that it's over, so they'll pay eighty percent of the sixty thousand that you were over. So we get the forty-eight thousand back, but we've already paid eighty.
Does that include transportation cost in that, do you know?
Yeah, believe it or not.
Part of the calculus.
Yeah, and the, we have, there's three and a half, and then there's ten times, so once you're over by ten times. Then there's another, another calculation, but. You know, that that sounded like really good, like, oh, good, they're gonna pay, but. They're paying eighty percent of the amount that you've paid, so if that number goes down, that means you're paying a lot in overall special ed costs. But what if, well.
I remember having these same discussions back when really bad was.
Isn't the state, this is the first one, special education.
Yes, except transportation, that's not on the list.
So they're kind of like building their own whole year then, and they're the ones that set the cost.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's more. A sort of a maximum, you know, amount, I don't think that there was anything. Nefarious about where, how they're setting those, and they're not trying to ramp those up, but trying to find people, like, if you. You know, try to hire a special ed personnel, like, let's say we were sending a lot of kids out for a particular. You know, particular service, and we said, no, we should hire someone, and they can't find someone that has that certification. Because they can make more in the private sector, doing their own thing, than we can possibly pay them, you know, as a public school.
But you, we are, as a S A U, looking into this, which is something down the road, and I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Of of trying to provide some of those services on a. With, I guess, other schools in the Lays region, right?
It's gonna work right now.
And trying to do that for the older kids, eventually, eventually, for some of the younger kids in the elementary middle school. Any other questions?
We really have to bring the room down.
Have a cookie.
Peter, it was nice to meet you.
You too.
You talk way too much.
I, well, you know, why bother interrupting Randy? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Very much, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
All right, and so we would move Wendy out to this next slot. Unless you wanna stick around and be a gentleman.
She was just starting to have fun.
You're the top.
I have some more for the.
We're ten seasons, we're better and better.
So attached here is a change that I proposed that the law out will be done next year. In regards to the elderly session, it has not been addressed since two thousand and twelve. You have copies of the two thousand and twelve article attached to this one that I'm proposing. And before that was two thousand and six that was adopted, so. Particularly with an eight point seven percent social security increase, and then two point, I think it was two point four percent this past year. For social security, everybody's income has gone up, but the income levels for. Um, but the income levels for elderly exemption haven't increased since two thousand and twelve. Um, that's including three, four, five years, the active for social security. But this would certainly help people that, um, are having trouble making, you know, making ends meet and. Um, give them a break in regards to the assessed value of their property. I don't believe in any town that I'm aware of, cause I worked at another town as you all know. Um, I don't believe any town has a huge amount of people that apply. Um, mostly because the limits are so low, and a lot of people have asked that. Oh, way over any amount that they can put in. Um, and that's not excluding their, their main residences, including, you know, motor, motor homes and boats and. You know, cars and, you know, things like that. Anyway, so, um, Dawn Anthony, if I'd be willing to rewrite it, and I'm bound to do that in my state. And, um, which is something I'd like the board to consider, putting in more articles to jump.
I mean, are the income levels stated here based on. Um, any other standard from around the state or around the country?
Town can adopt an elderly exemptions with the income levels that they wish. Um, there is an R standard addresses that, you know, I put on the thing, the list. And, um, the, the modification of the elderly exemption is actually done in the seventy-two thirty-nine B. And it just basically have minimum limitations, um. Determined by the senior town, not less than thirty-five thousand dollars, excluding the value of the residence. Under no circumstances shall the amounts of the exemption of any age category be less than five thousand dollars. Well, that's a long time ago. Um, and the combined net asset amount for mayor, for potential plaintiffs, and writing a spouse until the sale and transfer of the property. So, um, each town is a little different, um. And they certainly have a, a range.
I, I was just curious where the forty-five and the sixty-five numbers came from.
I based that one with the last one, what. This often based on what it was back in twenty twelve, um, back then it was, um, sixty thousand. Um, for sixty-four, forty thousand for the year, and then up from there. So I just based it on that.
I like the principle, I think it's kind of low, actually, to be honest with you. The thresholds. I think that, you know, you've had a lot of inflation since then, so, you know.
It's true. I mean, I know how much my property, when I have the values.
But in principle, I like the idea, I think we have the numbers, yeah.
I mean, certainly, before the board works on it and decides to make a law article, they certainly can change those numbers to what they think is not there. I, this was just a, uh, you know, Dawn and I and Elena and I had talked about it for a while.
Well, I'd like to know what, yeah, in terms of the elasticity of this is. Yeah, how much of an impact would this have? How many people would want to be increasingly included?
There would be some to the investment, often the testing here, yeah. So, we, I can print a list out and tell you how many people are getting elderly credits. It's more than you might think. Um, are people knocking on my door asking for this? No, no, maybe one here. Um, besides, besides what Wendy asking, asking for it to change. But with that being said, we did do an analysis in the past two years, each year. We checked with the all surrounding towns. Lost Way, Salisbury, Franklin, uh, New London, Wilmot. And we were, our numbers were better than theirs.
Really?
Yeah, and we have made a spreadsheet, though, um, you know, not to say that, you know, it's up to you guys, but.
You mean the existing policy is better than theirs or the dispropose new?
To consider what's happening, we offer the credit on our taxes, and that, those taxes. We still eat, the town still has to cover those taxes. That is put on everybody else. So that's probably.
It'd be interesting when we, when we look at this in more detail to have that.
Yeah.
That research and everything. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you for going on.
Well, I think.
But what we'd get that also just, it'd be that projection of, does this add? A hundred families, or a hundred, or, or three, or, you know, or somewhere, I mean, that's, that's what I'm at, I must just.
Probably exemptions can't be identified by the people that receive them, that's the law. Yeah, so she can have a list, but she can't have a list with names. And that's, that's good, and I knew that you had done that, and I didn't have a chance to.
Part of the problem is that the, the tax exemption. Because if a person makes certain amount of money that's elderly, and they own a car that's a certain age, or the car asset. Makes it so they can't get the exemption.
The ninety thousand dollars in, in assets is far too.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't know if we can, if that can be looked at to change that exemption. Standard or what, but it is a discussion.
I think what Wendy's given us, Franklin.
Right. Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I think it's worth a discussion.
Thank you.
Nice job, Wendy.
All right, we'll move on to our ambiprotory motivation.
Can, can we talk about the transfer station? I asked Dawn to put this on the agenda, and I also asked Roland to be prepared for a report.
Oh, okay.
Because I too have drastic concerns about the changes at the transfer station, which have not come to this board. And I would like for us to be on record as insisting that any of those changes from here on out. Come here before any action is taken. That would be my, that would be my admonition to us. We have had a lot of activity up there. At Roland's behest, and I'm not saying his intentions are not honest or forthright. But I think, as has been pointed out earlier this evening, there's a lot of activity which none of us were aware of. And I, I too was surprised to drive in and see that black box sitting there. And had no idea that our previous provider and our contractor was no longer being utilized. For that service, and I wonder if we're in violation of the contract with them. By not utilizing them longer. Yes, we get a better price, for sure, and there are other advantages to doing. Different business with different people. But for that not to come before us here, I think is a, is a mistake.
Fairly, as we're going through this phase.
And, and in addition, I think we should be really focused on getting somebody who is not a select board member. To be, as supervisor or an oversight effort at, at the transfer station. Um, I think there's a lot of dissension within the people who've worked there. For, for the lack of communication, the lack of, uh, planning, the lack of strategic effort going forward. That really needs to be addressed by having somebody who's not. Killing potholes in the road or grading roads somewhere else and or sitting here. Because we're not authorized to make those unilateral decisions.
I think the authority should go back to the town administrator like it has been previously.
Do you wanna make a motion?
A motion that we make the transfer station fall under the town administration, like it has been in previous years.
I would be in favor of that, so I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Uh, and, and this is not a slam on Roland at all, but I do believe that in the. In a similar vein, when you put me in charge of the highway department, you can't make those decisions as a board board member.
And that was done as a card bargain from. Because of an individual leaving, and we had a gap.
Right, and Roland was only there on a temporary basis, just like you until.
Any other discussion?
I'd add something to the discussion. I would just say that. As a addendum to that motion, perhaps, the town administrator, happy to assume those, I will work very closely with Roland to. Catch up and learn what he's done, all the work that he's done. And either collaboratively bring that back to the board and say, okay, this is all the, you know, standing on their shoulders of giants. You know, there was a very quick transition with Jeremy, kind of do a, a very similar thing with the. With the intention of what Jim was just saying as far as. Driving the boat forward towards creating position at the transfer station that. Again, ideally maybe is doing three days a week at the transfer station and two days a week. At the highway department, something like that, where their primary role is transfer station, but again.
We, we need that plan, what to get back here.
But at least in an interim spot, I think that does protect us. Many, like Les said, it's, it's not that Roland's doing good or bad things down there, Roland's just. Potentially doing things unilaterally, which can get us in trouble, but.
He might not be, though.
They could have put that dumpster in there just as a. To try it out to see what, what that.
We, yeah, we literally don't know, though. There is a financial component to that, that we have to be careful.
But the, the history on the transfer station goes back to when the transfer station was first built. At that time, Mark Thompson was road agent. And Mark came to the select board and told them that they should put an independent person that's not the road agent in charge of the. Transfer station, because it was taking too much time away from him doing his road duties. And the select board did appoint it to the town district. And we've had two town administrators go up to the transfer station and actually sit there and run it during the day. Mark Troy actually did.
I was there at six AM the other day replacing an air hose on the trail, so. Happy to help. So, all those in favor?
Thank you. Now let's move on to the ambiprotory or discussion.
Okay, so I handed out a sheet, which all of you had a chance to peruse. Which is probably inaccurate in terms of the absolute numbers. They may be soft, they may be high, they may be low, whatever. But this is one scenario of the work and the scope of activity that it would take to restore that vehicle to working order. In addition to that. There's a line in there which indicates what a current working model of that machine is. For sale on the market. Between the tires and the engine, the rebuild, and we don't know whether it's an in-frame rebuild on that engine or an out-of-frame rebuild. But the amount of money that you have to put into it to get it to work, um, is stated on the, on the line at the bottom. The rebuild cost would be ten thousand seven to eighteen thousand four. I would like to make a motion that we. Rebuild and refurbish the unit to a oper, to an operational standard. So that it could be utilized on our roads. Thank you.
So, discussion.
I am adamantly opposed to doing this. And, and I want the board to be on record of saying that this is not something we're interested in doing. So, without a specific number on.
I, I would, I would vote no on that, and say that the first thing we should do, since. I believe you've informed us that it's really too big a piece of machinery anyway for us.
If it were working, among other things.
Among other things, if it were working. And that the first course of action should be to reach out to the highway superintendent in the town of Tilton. And ask him if he would like to purchase said ham twenty-four tennis.
Perhaps, but I don't see that as a first action. I see that as a second action, after we decide we don't want anything to do with it. And we leave it at the disposal of the unit, whether it be resale to somebody else, whether it be. A, a scrapper to come and get it and take it and give us what we can get for it. But I think we need to be on record first as saying we don't want it. And that's the motion on the floor.
I thought the motion on the floor was. Lost on the floor is do it.
I would suggest you vote that down.
In the positive motion.
You think that we're gonna talk to our highway supervisor, and then you're committing your own discussion?
Hundred percent, I didn't read last time, a whole bunch of reasons, bye. Too big, too much loss. Get one around. It's no use to me.
You don't have a trailer to hold.
We can vote it down right now, and then we can, the administrator.
Well, we're having discussion, so, um.
All right, I think we all are in agreement, so let's just call the vote.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of refurbishing that, a range of ten thousand seven hundred to eighteen thousand? Making it operational, those in favor? All those opposed?
I guess the first, put a star on the wall.
Now, and we further, I would like to make a second motion that we leave the disposal of the unit up to the highway super.
Disposition of.
There a second for that?
I make a second on it.
Any discussion? Discussion, okay. We have a big yard over there. I really, if we can't get someone to buy this dog off us. Uh, I'm fine with letting it sit back in the corner there.
Well, we paid five thousand dollars for it, I'm quite sure the junk price is more than that, right?
Well, that, okay, fine, if we can get money, but I, I, I do not wanna spend town money to get rid of. Yeah, I'm picking up. So, I'm just saying, you know, if we can't find someone to buy it or to give us something for it.
I do believe, however, that the standards for municipal departments need to be a lot higher than private industry. And that our equipment needs to be working, it needs to be functional, but we shouldn't purchase it. And, and as well-intentioned as this purchase was, it's a bad idea.
So hopefully we can get the individual to purchase it.
I would, I would love to have Jeremy take his best shot and make a few coins off it. And, uh, and leave it at his discretion.
I have a question. Was the unit, um, working when it was purchased?
No.
Maybe the seller will buy it back.
That's what, that's what I said.
That was what Charlie was suggesting.
I don't think so.
No, no, that's all you were suggesting.
Oh, he was suggesting that the person who purchased it originally might be interested in it.
My seller pitches my origin.
I seriously doubt that.
Right, any further discussion? All those in favor of having Jeremy take care of disposal or disposition of it? Close, thank you. All right, assessing the tax behalf, executive finance, welfare, forfeit to our town for a tax, tax, budget.
I wanna sneak one in real quick. This, this came in at the eleventh hour, but we, I just. I think we would be remiss not to talk about twenty twenty-five paving. And this invoice that we just received from R and D for paving that was done on Maple Street. So the hundred and one thousand dollar invoice, our balance in the capital reserve fund for paving will be a hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. I have here a bid that we signed a few weeks ago to pave part of Flagpole, we're gonna ship order three hundred. Or a two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for twenty twenty-five. Those numbers don't add up. And I don't know what to do about that, and I just wanted to speak that. Yeah, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars of twenty twenty-five money. Plus an additional hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of twenty twenty-six money that we haven't even raised and appropriated, so. Discussion.
I think we gotta say, why are the asphalt ones that make them all dirt?
So, well, one of the thoughts would be to. From R and D, they, they could get to this, this year anyhow. If they did, it'd be November. And we're not sure that we really want the work done in November, in our, with capital issues. Yes, they do it all in the spring, then we do build it into our. Yeah, it becomes all the two hundred and seventy.
They're not gonna do it all, they're only gonna do.
We're gonna have a year between the top coat and the base coat.
Yes.
Right, so. We would only be paying for the base coat next year.
Which is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty, if they do the top coat, I'm sorry, the base coat, oh, sorry.
And that's only section, sectioning certain areas of the road out, that's not the complete road.
Basically the cemetery to, to Boston, to Boston Hill Road, and then the other end down to Whispering, whatever that is. Weren't the funds for the finish of Maple Street, wasn't that encumbered from?
It's all out of a C R F, it's not, there wasn't.
It was, it's out, right, so it wasn't an encumbered amount, it was, it was that amount that was in the C R F already. So, where I was going though, is the recommendation is to go to R and D, we're not gonna do it, we still have it. But you don't do phase one until next year. We still have it, but you don't do phase one until next year. That's my recommendation.
I think that's the only way to do it.
Because I'm still getting a good positive heavily traveled road done. That started in next year. As well as we'll have the funds, whatever we add into it through Warren Arals. Through the CRF to add in there to cover that plus whatever's next.
But that does leave us a hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. In the CRF that we could legally spend in twenty twenty-five, should there be time. Another option is, can we pay you a hundred and sixty-six now? And, you know, I don't know. I.
We don't want to spend what we've got if they, you know, it's like, we've got to say this is earmarked for this project.
But but one of our discussions that we've been having also was not funding a lot of funds to keep the tax rate down.
And part of part of the game we played last year with the highway department budget was. Our operating budget looked like it went down by a significant amount.
Hundred thousand dollars.
If our, if we look at our paving budget that we. Yeah, it was, but it was a lot of the operating just went into the.
We had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that always went into the paving. We had seventy thousand dollars in the account. And we always put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into. Mickey Mouse money.
Well, I'm making out the just.
You're taking money out of the general account and putting it into a CRF to make your account look like you're not spending as much money.
But that's not the only reasons for doing it. You don't have to encumber funds, you don't have to do anything. You have a pool, a a fund. That you can now draw on. Some year you may draw a hundred thousand, another year you may draw four hundred thousand.
Unfortunately, this year's operational budget took a huge hit.
It doesn't.
Because of that transfer.
Right.
And now next year it's going to look really awkward if we try to restore that money which was put in CRF last year.
Unless we don't put as much in the CRF.
It's going to be, that's going to be a hard sell.
Or we don't put as much in the CRF. If you have to look.
So to Don's point though, let's not spend the CRF this year because we may have. Next year. And so we're putting sixty or eighty thousand into it instead of a hundred and fifty.
Right, right.
Yes.
In the coming budget cycle.
I agree with that.
Take the action. I will reach out to R and D, say. Sorry, this will be all.
Take the approach of.
This was all.
And then say, well, you know, from the town's perspective, we're thinking, you know, rather than try to push it in November, just hold off those.
It is what Jeremy know that this was all going on before. So it's.
But even October, November. I'm interested in real interior of all part of this asphalt.
No.
Because there is culvert work, there are culvert replacements, there are some rocks that have to be pulled out of ditching. There's all kinds of stuff that has to be done before they pave.
Have a long list before all that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Bill was in line with the contract, correct?
From R and D for the Maple Street?
Yeah, this is not a surprise amount.
So.
Contract amount.
It's about what eight thousand seven hundred dollars higher than what we had talked about because we decided to do some additional paving.
Probably happened is when you guys were discussing the Maple Streets, everything up. We didn't have the numbers for the capital reserves accounts of that time, because that was back. And Bill came in back in June. And we didn't find the accounts until, you know, maybe three or four weeks ago. So. You guys probably did not have, you were thinking, oh, we put two hundred and one thousand.
So preliminary budgets are rolling in. Um, figured I'd start with the. Someone easy one, fourth of July, um, see a five thousand dollar increase requested by the permanent head, Mr. Phelps. Um, five thousand or three thousand? Uh, sorry, three thousand. I was thinking of. And that was. Based on some discussions that we had in this past year.
So what's what are we doing here? Right, so.
Yeah, I think we said we would have to operate something.
Yeah, so my 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 thought is.
So the question, the the answer to that is last year, meaning current year, um, fireworks. They knew would be eighteen thousand, but. Board and and I believe budget committee said no. But 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 I talked to the uh, guy and he said. It's at least going to be eighteen thousand, if not more, for next year's fireworks. So. That's why that number is in there. Now, if you guys voted down, want to stick with the fifteen thousand. And we'll change it.
Yo, the fire department, every year down the front, when they block off both ends of the highway and they got you, you got to be able to be. Collecting funds for the private department charities. Fourth of July, why don't we put a total of each end of the roads and let people stay to come.
But that would be up for the fourth of July committee and luck of the ways. If we said, we're only going to do fifteen thousand, that's what we put in last year, or we're only going to do, you know, and spend thirteen. One hundred and thirteen, then they're going to come up with whatever the delta is.
My, I also think they have the opportunity to craft their display to the number. And not the other way around. You get the car driving the horse here.
Well, I think what's part of the problem, this thing's gone way out of skill through because the only reason that the fourth of July committee is part of. To town to be in open right now is because. We had to cut, put them on our insurance. That was all we were supposed to do was put them on our insurance, so they were covered. We had nothing to do with actually funding. Fourth of July and over the years of five thousand so much year now, we're up to corner eighteen thousand and I'm not in favor of that at all.
My recommendation is just to say, we want this display that you can give us for fifteen thousand dollars, whatever you do your best. Let's just have that. You know, I don't want that extra three thousand.
Unless they want to fundraise themselves. I mean, they do collect funds from the green. So we do allow them to to get some revenue.
And it seems to me like two years ago, we had. Two fireworks displays because someone donated a whole bunch of money. Do you guys remember that? And we had this whole show and it was like all over. And then all of a sudden like started again and we had like another twenty minutes of fireworks. So then I was like. Ah, okay. So there are people that it's important to them and they might be willing to donate.
So what I'm hearing, it sounds like a bunch of new segment. That we hold them at fifteen thousand dollars for the next year. Further discussion? All those in favor?
All right, the next one that's coming around is property assessment. This is our contract with Avatar. This is. Five-year contract.
We're already under this contract.
Yes, that's correct.
So this is a fixed number that we.
I signed contracts last year.
Um, there's not much to approve here.
No, we can't lower it. I wouldn't suggest raising it either.
Do we have a revised tax map?
Not yet.
Now is it thirty-three or eight because we only paid nine thirty-five for the tax map revision?
And we ended up with one less.
I would expect more um, charges to be coming to them by the end of the year. Does they have a town updating the tax minutes?
So any further discussion? There's not much to discuss.
All righty, let's do. If you notice I'm giving her a copy as I'm going around.
The cola amount was two point five, not three percent.
That's not true. The cola's not set yet.
I'm just saying that if it follows what everybody's talking about, it's going to be the same as it was in the street.
I don't think that's true. Everything I've read is.
I don't listen to reads, I watch.
Listen to the, they they go the cola in, yes, if I'm ready to do it, yes.
That holds thirty-three dollars ninety-five cents.
So this is drawing welfare zero percent increase. It's basically an insurance plan. Because we don't know how many people will be on welfare or have these. And I mean, you can see that in the rent assistance. One year is thirteen thousand. Or it's twenty-three thousand the next year, it's fifty-four thousand. We don't know. So any reason to not hold this at the same forty thousand five hundred and twenty-six? And we do have a separate ETF.
I think that's what we contributed. So far we have not touched that yet, which has been fantastic.
But I think we're going to, because if you do the math, already what we spent so far and we got our. Four months to go, it's, we might have a die to go for that.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor of maintaining zero percent increase? Thank you.
Here in the fifty-four, maybe they want to include this. Can we send them back to you and just let you know?
The budget change has to be off the budget that he knows.
I would think we'd want to have a job.
Yeah, let you know, but I'm just just going out there in case.
I have a comment on this, this one. I hadn't had a chance to review this one yet. So our, the treasurer line, the ten thousand four hundred. That may be an opportunity for us. We we still haven't talked about the. The possibility of merging our finance director and our treasurer into a into a position. Um, but that might, that might be one to discuss.
So all all these act, these actual numbers, maybe there's some.
Those are actual last of the end of August.
Thank you very much. You're way ahead of me with your answer.
Yeah, that's why these are, these are all preliminary. Budgets too, but it's just how we have to do it, so.
Right, well, I just want to know what one is as of.
And I know this is early, you know, jumping on this, but we thought. We might as well start early and if you guys have things that you want to take home and review and then come back and have questions.
These are the more low hanging fruit, one sec.
It's kind of hard because you can't do an actual because.
Well, you take the number divided by eight and then multiply by twelve and you're kind of.
And that's how, that's how, when I was looking at the numbers today, that's what I was sort of giving the actual, exactly what Charlie.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, we we have a long time to go for the year before we get to the point when the actuals come out.
There's not going to be any mileage because we don't have any meetings that we're going to. The audit is the only one that I can see that could be different because they haven't finished the audit yet. So that could be higher. But I left it the same. And postage, we're going to be pretty close on postage. We may be a little bit over because postage just went up again. Um, but I left it the same. Training and seminars is just one that we go to in the springtime and I don't expect it to go up. Bank fees, we dropped that down. That's random. And the treasurer, it's just the wages that are really in question.
So so I'm trying to understand the. I mean, we're projecting to come out at about one twenty-two or one twenty-five, we've been saying for this year. And and why we've got a increase then. Recommended increase uh, of eight thousand dollars. I'm I'm just.
Well, one of the reasons it's going to be low this year is because we have.
One to one forty-nine.
Right, we do come up with one twenty-five because we're not paying the treasurer.
Yeah, one twenty-two, right, yeah. So even if you add that back in. On that number of one thirty-three, not one forty-nine.
I mean, my recommendation would be to fund a flat. So all those are merit increases for.
No, they can still perhaps get that in there. You know, we can get the cola and and merit and still. Even if we pay.
There's no effect. The only thing that's got to be that, if you want to call it that, is the labor. It's fair, you know, your pension is going to cure every day.
I think the difference is in the audit. I think it's part of the. The number is.
That's going to break us back up to the one forty.
Yeah, they haven't finished their audit. They're charging us.
That and not having the, you know.
Well, yeah, the treasurer, I mean, you got here eleven grand, right, so.
I mean, it's still, yeah, it's thirteen outstanding in the audit. Yeah, ten thousand on the strike. There's twenty-three, there's a stream in the one twenty, one forty-one. Or one twenty. Yeah, and merit increases.
The other. Thing with the. Those are, those are budgetary numbers. We were talking about this in the office as far as. Three percent will be the max merit that, you know, the colas, we can, we can take those to the bank, but the three percent merit is merit based. Right, you know, if it's a one and a half percent or two percent or no percentage, that may give us some, some wiggle.
So. Yeah, the math's not right on some of these for some reason. So like the uh, financial assistant wages forty-two or twenty-one, if you multiply that by one point oh six, it's forty-four, five. Not forty-five, so.
That's taking her her rate of pay that she's at.
Same one.
That's taking the rate of pay that she's at times two thousand eighty hours, about the six percent.
Yeah, the budget number versus the actual number.
Oh, okay.
There was a change in. From the daily budget.
Right, right. So I'm looking at the budget, you're right, okay.
That, I mean, that's the best way to do it, is take the rate twenty-eighty. I think we'll. There's one we need to talk on. I think anyone's will respect the need of the wages. Col- cola's kind of set, merit, I think we need to talk about that whole program along with our evaluation system. And how we build that, because I I agree that if it's a three percent pool. And you may say, you know, someone's been really acceptable this year. We get them four percent, then everyone else gets one and a half. How we have balances out. It is the equal percentage, but at the same time, it's equal to a number. We've, we should talk about that.
Yeah, somewhat. I I mean, I agree with that. Um, but I also think. Those are some a little higher that we need. Numbers that are a little later in the year. I think it's kind of early on this one. Just because, you know, it's like, well, what is the audit going to come in at? Is it going to be twenty-two? Is it going to be twenty, is it? Twenty-six? We don't, at this point, no. twenty-six? We don't, at this point, no. Twenty-twenty-four was twenty-one.
Right.
So. I think we're going to be close. I think it's going to be.
Didn't they give you a set figure this year for the audit?
No.
We get a set figure from them every year.
Well, I'm glad you do.
So I think maybe, you know, once we have, once it gets a little later, we've got some more concrete numbers.
I, I think we're directional correct.
Yeah, it's directional.
We just need to, we'll find you this ago.
I haven't had a chance to look at this one either. It came in eleven hours, so.
You're seeing for the first time, as I am.
It's all this good, somebody spilled animal names.
Yeah.
I'm asked.
The next one didn't go for, you know, four percent merit. It's just. Not worthy.
Given that it's an elected position, still, I don't know how that works.
Well, this is what, last year, we just put it into the budget.
Correct.
And had no discussion. I almost think that this is supposed to be discussed by the town, because it is an elected official, it's not just regular. It's a separate department from the town. It's tax collector's part of the town office, but the office of the tax collector is an elected official, the officer.
This is one of the where, at the, we vote on the bottom line.
Yeah.
We don't vote on any of the general line items unless we want to zero out the line item.
But when we had.
By the, by zero out, I mean, it would be the whole town clerk line would go to zero.
But when we increased her hours and so forth at town meeting, we discussed her pay and everything, and the town voted on her getting any.
Thousand one.
I'm not talking about the last time, we talked about when it was first established. So I don't, I don't know. I think it would.
Now, this is one of those, I, I think we need to look, take this back. My recommendation is, when we come back on our next meeting. And because we're getting some of these media ones.
Yeah, because one of the things is, it's going to make sense sometimes.
I might be able to answer a couple of questions, but Lisa filled all of this out. I just made it look pretty. She went up on the ballot clerk wages, uh, because there will be two elections next year versus the two hundred. Now, they or she offers, the helpers that come and count and, and sign people in and check their badges, that if they want to be reimbursed for their time at minimum wage, that they come to request. In the past eight years, there's been one lady that's done it, and she passed away. So, um, so I don't know, you know, I don't know how, why, how much they advertise that, but that's what that is.
So who are all these people then? Like the ballot clerks, the supervisors, there's those supervisors with the checklist.
Supervisors. And they always put in their hours that they put in for the year at the end of the year. So that's, you know.
I didn't know that's right. I think they've paid positions. I thought these are all volunteers.
No, and the moderators, nobody, as long as I've been here for twelve or thirteen years, nobody has ever collected the moderator wages.
Right.
And right now, I believe we don't even have a moderator. So.
He hasn't been notified.
No, okay.
He hasn't accepted it, because he was sort of the default. It was a write-in. He was a write-in, you know.
Yeah, I mean, so how about the, like, it doesn't matter. I mean, I don't want to get into the bug dust here.
Yeah.
But some of these numbers, this stuff.
Yeah, so I said, let's bring this one back.
So according to unofficial intelligence, residents of the town control this number. The board of selectmen does not have the authority to set compensation for elected officials.
Right.
But what happened with the rest of it, though? Rest of it.
Well, the rest of it, okay, but the, but the.
Her line, yeah.
Three, three and four percent, of three and three percent, we can't say we, we, we don't move.
And that's what happened two years ago. Right. When we tried to.
I see.
Another town voter goes out.
But that's what I was talking about, where the town actually had to vote on increasing her salary.
Right.
Right.
Probably we should look at the RSA's regarding that, and it wouldn't surprise me if every year she's supposed to come with a warrant article if she's changing her, her wages, because that first warrant article included health insurance, vacation time, and most elected people do not get those.
That's because we had made, we moved her from a part-time job to a full-time position.
It's a good point.
Well, they were there until she was elected, and then she dropped the day, so.
I just gave you executive. Executive branch?
The executive mileage on this, uh, what, which one are we on still? Are we on the executive? The, it's, it's increased by twenty-five percent, but yeah, we have a, a town car. So. We took.
The engine's running, just to keep the air.
So should that actually have been increased, or should it have stayed flat?
The only reason it increases is because we went over thirty on the actual. And all, all four of us drove down to that N H M A conference.
Yeah. Yep. No, I, I understand what you're saying.
Including food.
The insurance and all that for the town car is on some other line somewhere.
That's baked into just our insurance line.
That's in the finance.
It's just baked into.
If you're going to go to a seminar and take your own vehicle, like if you're going to go to one of the N H M A things, a big put on, you're certainly not going to take the town car, because that would leave, you know, it out here.
What difference does it make? Because if you go to the, when you're on cars, you can put in for mileage.
Why not?
I said you can put in for mileage, yes. We have the town car, we don't put in for mileage.
Follow with that line.
I.
Personal.
If, if it makes a difference, I will, I will kick in fifty dollars out of my own pocket. We can just, just move on. However, really want, I, I will. That's part of Shelby, and also part Bob Norlander for doing our videography, including the town meeting that he does tremendously well. And you can see that we were we've had some, some longer meetings this, this year, so we're definitely going to exceed our budgeted amount this year on, on that one.
Select board salary, how come there is not a three percent cola, three percent merit for that, ten percent merit for that?
It's up to you guys.
It should be at least a cola.
We're waiting on your, your direction.
Although the select board can.
Again, the position has to go before the town.
Well, that's one of the ones where you have to go in, and it goes into the three thousand dollars, and somebody has to get up. I recommend that we increase. And then we get hung and thrown out in tires and leather.
Right.
Well, yeah, but you gotta stop, we can put zero in there and see what the town has to say.
Oh, yeah, they throw.
Don't get there that.
Well, that's not very reasonable.
In principle.
Why don't we do that with the finance director's line?
We can't afford to have her walk on. I really don't care if you walk.
Are you going with a vote for your honeymoon? Oh, I make a motion, let me, uh, accept this one in principle.
And, and except for minor on all these, the three percent that merit is, that's a place hole.
It's a place hole, exactly. Probably not going to go to ten percent, ten, it should.
But select board salary wise, what's the four hundred and eighty dollars?
That was a three percent that we goofed around with
Oh.
last year, and I, I don't, I hate weird numbers, so I went just flat three thousand.
Don wants even numbers.
You took it out? You could have increased it to more. It was an uneven number.
That it? That's all I have for this evening on budgets, preliminary budgets.
No, these are just. If you mark them up, back around X and Y. Hopefully they'll really clearly quickly, yes. I don't think we want to go to the bottom. Now, you got all this, the merit, probably. So we're talking about reviews. I mean, that should all be one.
Yeah, special work session.
I would actually want more to work session. All right, so moving on, then we have the.
They're converting this, Charlie.
We have a series of policies.
That's the first one. I'm trying to print out.
One take, yeah, have we decided yet if we're going to make a warrant article for this, and then going to go into deeper discussion?
We said that'd be one, because we said, we think, again, in correction, we don't know those are right numbers for us yet.
Okay.
Yeah, but we should, as we have our, um, a work session about all those warrant articles, that'll be a part of that discussion as well.
Right, so the, the only. The only final copies I could find of any of the policies for the highway superintendent, the, the two for the highway department.
Yeah.
And, uh, select board that you would. Right, but I couldn't find the town administrator one, and I, I don't have one that's formatted like you. I just have what you circulated as a.
Drag, this is just putting it on the. On the format.
The procurement policy and, and the, the other one we had agreed on, but we had to make two changes to it, I believe, wasn't done.
Very small.
Very small changes, and then we're going to vote to accept it.
On those, which one?
The procurement policy.
Procurement.
Yes. So after we made the changes, you came back to us with this meeting, then we're going to vote to accept it.
Correct. Okay, see if there's any further discussion. So, you don't have.
We don't have, that's what I'm saying. So we're, we're, tonight, we're talking about policies, and we don't have necessarily found copies of.
There's still the copy of.
The only changes were, were like typing and spelling.
Right, so you've seen, you've seen this before.
Right, okay. That's, so let's start with that one.
Right.
Well, that's a work session, and we all agreed on it there as well. So I move that we accept the select board's duties and responsibilities when we sign the document.
I see I can.
All in favor?
All right.
Let's do that. And then we can put on the, what page, square one. And moving on to the procurement policy. Can you circulate all these by email tomorrow?
Sure.
It's the same one that.
Only changes that we did since our.
Okay.
That one does have the chairman and vice chairman, statutory, initial at the bottom.
Is there any further discussion on the, on the policy?
The edit I had, well, again, I haven't seen the, and the edit I had was about change orders. My, um.
That was done.
Yeah, change orders must be forwarded, all change orders signed by contractor.
So what you want was to be initiated by the.
That's the words I'm looking for.
Well, most change orders must be owner initiated, require detailing scope, cost, and funding. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's word.
We're doing a date on this. Oh, you got it, the documents.
The procurement policy per RSA has to be reviewed every year.
Every year.
I was interested in the vote on procurement policy.
Not yet.
Any further discussions?
Now, part of the P O policy was then included in the. I make a motion, you chip.
I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Since we've all signed it already. Drum roll, please. All right, so this is the, yeah, this is the town administrator job description.
I haven't even seen that.
But it's the same.
Issue? It's not, it hasn't circulated by email, so.
Yes, it has.
It went out right before the work session, and at that work session, we changed two words on us.
I, well, I was at the work session. I searched high and low today for the, these things, once I got the agenda.
I looked at chapters from you, from last, from Don, I figured Jim, no, that's, I didn't look.
There's enough information going back and forth there without making my consent. So where are you going on your honeymoon?
Next spring.
Where?
Um, we're going to go from Marseille to Athens.
Oh, that's nice cruise.
On a Viking boat.
Last time I was on.
August twenty-second, I sent out the email with the, the draft of the document that's being reviewed at the moment. At the work session on August twenty-fifth, we turned a couple of words. The day after that, I said, made the changes we talked about, and we'll see you at September.
It was, uh, just before I get distracted from the marine, we were putting the Caribbean cruise.
Yep.
It's called the Adventure Islands and.
Oh, nice. I don't care for the really big boats, like the Carnival or the Princess, I have. Looks like vacationing in a Petri dish.
I was on the light aircraft carrier.
Yeah, oh, well.
USS Pendel.
No choice.
If, if you go into the, the restaurants and so forth, and back then, they actually had a white line across the floor. For military personnel not allowed to cross that, remember those days?
Oh, and you're right, just here with the, uh, select board. So I was looking at select board from, from the. I think the primary change we made was.
Chief executive.
Chief executive, because we talked about the administrator. Chief, chief executive. No, we changed it to a chief executive, sub-chief executive, chief executives, and that is a line of there's several attacks that. There's several attacks that.
Very good, so that it doesn't get confused with corporate structure.
And then there was a typo. I don't even remember what it was. It was a formatting.
It was a blank number six at the blank number seven.
Or you can go on to the next one. I'll read through this while, cause. You hit the highway guys.
Yeah, great.
The mission statement and the, um. Do you want both of the same? I'm sure. We have all of these multiple times. I believe you've, plus you've had a work session on.
Right, on the highway supervisor, the.
Yeah.
The highway maintenance workers, the whole packet, that whole packet had like four different job descriptions and these are just two of those four.
Right, and we said we would, if anyone had any further comments or anything else to Don. Incorporated, I don't think there's anything else.
I haven't been about, I haven't. I was gonna, I was gonna wait until tonight to hear if there was any formal comment because I hadn't seen any emails from anyone, but. If there are, then I will get those together.
Cause I only thought on those, or not necessarily, but the supervisor, which I think was on tonight, to hear that for you might wanna work, carry me on just to.
Yeah, that was not in this.
Right. Okay, but the supervisor was on tonight's thing.
Yeah, his permission and supervisor. So move that we accept all of these. Both of these.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Close.
With an effort toward avoiding the last problem. So proper toys. An effort to avoid the previous problem.
Yeah.
Secondly, I saw there's a N H M A budget finance board. There's a whole, this is a certain. September twenty. Nine to four thirty, this is budget, I mean, it's targeted at municipal officials and employees involved in the budget process. Leading members of the government body, budget management, time managers, most directors.
When is it?
This is September twenty. The third from nine AM to four thirty in Littleton.
Oh, wow, it's not. Wait, we're at ten remotely? I thought there was one in.
There was, there was one in Concord last week.
Oh.
Do they do that remote? No, they don't.
Because it's part of a, there's an actual certificate program that you can get. It's like a series of six, like four.
We have to take all six in person. I've got a couple that day.
So I'm gonna take a look at possibly going to this.
Where is it? I think there's a bit of two hundred something.
It's a hundred and fifteen. N H I numbers. Two thirty.
What's the date on it to go?
Twenty fifth.
October twenty fifth?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think I'll go to that. I pointed out a quick.
That's a third station.
I'm sorry.
Maybe we can find an answer to that question that.
It must be.
That'll be a long day. That's not ready.
If we, if we have to crack down on Littleton, we'll be all seven.
I would like.
I have a question. Have you voted on the?
Not yet. It just went back.
Coming right up. You beat me to it. So there's a motion, I would make a motion that we accept the town administrator's job description.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
All in favor?
All right.
Close.
It took a while.
Yeah.
Since the Russian into these things.
You could ask. I wouldn't know what to do.
Okay.
I wouldn't say it.
Not like when you never had county administrators or guys.
You've never had this town administrator know, though. Come on.
I haven't worked in doctor before.
I made Pete laugh. That's, that's gotta be worth something right there. How often do you see Pete Samer laugh? Like, come on.
Well, now, but now you have a performance evaluation criteria, which we can measure your performance by.
For, for how many weeks?
Yeah, well.
We hired them with same expectations, though. We're pretty clear about expectations.
All right. Shelby, um, Jim, Les, Charlie.
You might wanna stick around because there was a.
Discussion about flowers.
Right.
Flowers?
Yeah, we'll talk about the planting of the, of the flowers.
We should. May I just say something? Unless you wanna go first, but we have no intention of making the maintenance of the driveway. Or the walkway above it difficult.
Okay.
In order to, he would like to plan.
Right, but these guys know nothing about what's going on.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to. So it's not been brought to the board, yes.
Thank you for the heads up, though.
May I bring it out since the library is involved?
Are we on to that piece of business?
We're on to that piece of business.
There we go.
Please do.
Sure.
Okay. The library, conservation committee, and the garden club, and Bill Hoffman, who is a local advisor, he's. Done, advised on gardens around town that look pretty good. Um, would like to do something with the area that now has black mulch. We, the walkway, thank you again, and the driveway, uh, by the library. Um, so far, the suggestion is to do some kind of pollinator garden made of planting, which because of the gradient. Will probably mean crops. And maybe some plants. We realize that it's steep, that it, it has to be worked with. We know that the walkway gets salted, the driveway gets salted and plowed. We have no interest in. Making maintenance. Of the, um, project. Difficult or interfering with maintenance like the walkway. No.
So what are you asking for?
Yeah.
But we're not asking for any.
Oh, you, permission, money?
Not.
Funding?
Well, it's like, what's awesome?
More or less.
So, so it is my understanding, however, that they do not have carte blanche. To proceed with modifying the exterior of the building grounds or any other property in the area without coming to the select board.
Correct.
So we either need to participate in the planning of this and or give them carte blanche to move forward.
I make a motion, we see control to the library committee to deal with if they want beds to make them look pretty and pollinate flowers and fruits and whatever they so desire.
All right, I'll second that for the sake of conversation.
Right.
So what they wanted us to do, well, sorry, not us, I'm no longer with the highway department. What they wanted to have happen was to have the highway department strip the arc mulch that's out there now. And so that it can be replaced with lawn. The reasoning being theoretically that the black mulch that's out there now has a dye in it, which would be deleterious to the plants. I did some research and found out that all of those dyes are vegetable based. They're all organic compounds, which are non-toxic to plants, other plants, insects, et cetera. There's no reason that the soil cannot be added on top of what is already stabilized bank on an inclined plane.
Uh, I would. The black mulch is ugly, ugly as.
But it's gonna disappear under law.
But why keep it?
Why have the highway department have to pay to remove it?
Stabilized wear of law? That I don't know. Yes?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Cause then you're gonna have grass, you've got a lot.
No, no, we're not talking about. The accepted practice. Fine, I know that Don and Les are meeting out there with the members of those three.
Just on now. Just done. I, I can't. It's two days before my wedding. I can't.
Great, okay. I mean, great for your wedding. I won't be there either. Neither will Nancy Robards from the conservation committee because somebody has.
Less is wedding?
No, that's a more likely. But, um.
But you do have garden club, you have the expert.
Yes, and I will have two libraries.
There's a motion on the floor.
That, to have.
Well, I.
And it was.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, we're just having the discussion.
Right.
Trying to make sure I understand. Yes, but my understanding also, having a brother who's been on the garden club and doing this. Some of the master bedroom itself, where you actually put mulch and there's a drone method of, it's like who did. Type of gardening. It sticks and whatnot over there because they will provide a natural compost and feed over time.
He's great. I, I know that there's a, yes, there's the woman up on Chase Hill Road who actually did logs underneath. Okay.
So I think having the experts there, which is the keeping wood motion on the floor, turns it over to the library to, uh.
We give you control. We're not gonna move the mulch, but we give you control to do with it, what you'd like.
Well, I think that's, we need to make sure less is fine, but.
Thank you for the research.
Yes, and I, I called Dirt Dog, cause then the guy tuned me up for like ten minutes. So that's where it came from.
Okay.
Any further discussion? So voting yes on this turns it over to the library and takes the highway department out of the removal of lawn or removal of the mulch.
Just for the area adjacent to the ramp.
Yeah.
Right.
All in favor?
All right.
Close. Right, Don?
I have one final piece of business. I have been asked for the umpteenth time. Are local trucks allowed to use planes and switch road during the detour? Period. We've just talked about this at length. The residents that are asking about this would like a. A written statement and my. Can the select board give me the authority to draft a written statement? I can send it out to email if there's any comment, but it'll be ultimately signed by the town administrator so that we don't have to wait until another.
So these are local businesses.
These are local businesses with trucks that are concerned about getting stopped by.
You voted on this already.
I know, but he's asking, sorry, the, the folks are asking for a, some sort of a written statement that they can just. Say, yes, we have permission to do this.
They don't wanna get in trouble.
Well, it's our own police that can do it.
Yeah.
Or be known to.
Right, again, I've tried, I've spoken to them many times and I, if it's okay with the select board, I will just draft a.
Are they talking about logging trucks from?
Logging trucks, aggregate trucks.
You're gonna have all those logging trucks go down that, for that's a local business. Oh, and I think that that's what they're.
You're not gonna hurt the road anymore. It's already heard on.
I don't think the roads heard at all.
Planes run, or we've been down it lately?
Well, we have. Yeah, why, we already have. So that they can be able to do this. This is just to give the authorization.
Yeah.
To send them a letter stating first election of this one, per direction of the select board, local vendors can use. Any further discussion?
Most people.
Yeah, we, not much, we can't. We just like having, Don, just go.
We'll write a letter.
Write a letter. Thank you.
It's already, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Anything else?
I would like to bring something up.
Is that a German motion or is it?
It's going to be right after, believe me. The situation at the transfer station. With the blocks that were caved in once before and made equipment go in, it's not been addressed yet and it's doing the same thing. And the employees that operate it are getting very scared about going out there with equipment to. Put things in the dumpster or push it down because they're afraid it's gonna happen all over again.
So what's the solution?
I guess we have to have somebody, probably our rotating, doing analysis of it and find out. We have.
We'll have, let's have the town administrator that was the info.
That's true, but we have, um, the blocks.
Yeah.
That we had already bought to do the other wall that was supposed to be used because they're interlocking blocks and they were never used and never done. So, Don, you might want to put that on your list.
Yeah, it's going on right now, number eight.
Oh, no, it's hard to use higher than that.
And then I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All right. Do, did you wanna say anything? I make a motion if we go back into, so normally we have the highway. We didn't wanna put you on the spot.
Please shut up.
So I make a motion.
Have me gone, we lay down, cause he's giving up.
We're gonna, we're gonna go back into cell.
Sorry. So, let him have a report, Jeremy. Somebody's found, okay.
Not really want a good week, but we can turn it around. Uh, most of the stuff is extremely bad, so you're on service, like three times the amount that it should be. I don't have filters, don't have oil, no hydraulic coil, no drain pan to drain the oil to change it. And getting the list together, we're down two trucks currently right now and both in the garage, getting worked on.
So in a set commercial rush or?
One that reads and one that forward. So for hoping that the new truck is something that's under warranty, but when they look at that, it's fifteen thousand miles and about nineteen hundred hours since anything's been done to it, they're probably gonna say, um, too bad. But we will get stuff turned around, but we're gonna have to get some of those stuff so that we can take care of the trucks and I have one capable of doing it. Guys have helped me.
Can you get us a, um, a, a price list, Jeremy, on what the filters and, and the oil and everything costs so that we can. Vote on authorizing it?
Oh, fuck it.
Well, no, that's what I mean. If we get a price list, we know.
Have an idea.
Right.
They're all hydraulic coils, like eight hundred dollars.
Right.
You don't, you don't need a one gallon jug. You need fifty five gallon drum, cause you blow a truck in through the oil in the middle of the night, you need way more than a gallon. We had one gallon.
Right.
And motor oil, like, yeah, you know, we don't have to buy, there's a big bulk tank that we can get for motor oil, hydraulic oil on the depth fluid. Can save us a lot of money, but it's a little bit of money upfront to set it up. Hoping that we can wait to do that till budget time. Through one of the biggest suppliers, Dennis and Lubrants, will give us an extremely good price on bulk delivery versus buying small jugs. I mean, we'll just take a jug over and fill it up and.
Might be a tank, two fifty or looks fine like.
Four or five hundred gallons and like basically like we can get Rotella, which is one of the federal rules that we should be using for the price of a cheaper oil. When we're getting it in bulk delivery, which is what I've done, multiple towns around me have done the same. They come and fill it in hydraulic oil, one oil. Not six different kinds of oil. It will go in the rear end in the back of the hydraulic system in the back of the grader, everything in the grader can go in. The truck hydraulic systems, so we have one oil. No one has to worry about if they're putting the wrong one in. It's a little bit more expensive than the other oil, but you don't have to worry about. What you're doing in the beginning and at like the bulk price. Also in the depth fluid, it's a big six hundred, eight hundred gallon total with a diesel nozzle and fifty foot hose. And so. And it's a lot cheaper than ours. We have a fifty cent gallon barrel with a pump, which you can get cross contamination because you're filling up another jug. If any of those crystals get into the system, the trucks are done, and we gotta have a tow and get fixed. That's about the middle, most expensive is the little jugs, which we would keep a couple in the long end if you're not near the shop. No, you have to have a few, that's the most expensive way, the second most expensive is fifty five gallon. The tow is about a quarter of the price. More money upfront, but you divide it by the gallons, it's a lot better deal.
That's all gonna be stored indoors, right?
Yeah, they just, they were, two of them, oils were stacked. They don't need a containment, it's a self-contained thing, it's all approved, they don't have to have any steel protection.
Which is gonna be my next question.
And they, they belong to the company and they would maintain them, and they would maintain the pump to Dennis and.
Perfect.
And that, it would not take up half as much as one of those desks, the two, when they, you one on top and then the other one be next to it. And it would, you know, upfront money, but then it would save us money. And we fill top off every year, whatever we would use. So I'd like to work towards that, but in the meantime, I need to get you know, the filters and, you know, really you need like two sets at this point because everything needs a service and then we need to have one on the shelf, which is normal and there's like three filters in there that don't go to anything we have. And antifreeze that doesn't go to the trucks that we have, you, they're almost everyone who's specific kind of antifreeze that you can't just imagine.
Thank you, next one.
No, we worked on cleaning up a lot of stuff in the yard, there's some more stuff, there's an old bridge that got taken out. I would like to get that and haul it out and the town can have the money back for it, because I don't know why it's sitting there. One of the old bridges, I guess, somebody wanted the beams for something, so they're all sitting there, but.
The stuff that came from all. There's, there's, there's some four by four twelve foot beams down there, don't get rid of them. Those were at the back of the transfer station building that we put up a few years ago to stop all the trash from blowing into the woods. And somebody got it in their mind that it was a stop the bear fence, so they tore the whole thing down. And all it was, was chicken wire, so it's true, it's anything to stop bear. But someday, I'd, I'd like to see that go back up so it stops all the trash from going back out in the woods, that was the purpose.
You can come down, I can show you, but we cleaned up a lot of the garbage and that old office building, there was still food, like people were still working out of it, like, just complete. It's not where all the street signs are, everything else has been hauled out, what we found keys for all the trucks just sitting in there, nobody do or in there, somebody could have taken all those. Found street signs, five or six of one sign that was ordered, because nobody had any organization to see what we had. So they're all standing up so I can walk in there, one of the guys could walk in and say, we don't have this one, you gotta order it. The signs are hanging up on the wall, we're working on more organization in the shop so that things can move a lot smoother, we work out on the roads for a while, when we go back and try to spend a couple hours on that and then go back out. Do some, well, we worked on the bridge, I don't know, maybe it was over the bridge, you must have noticed that you can see.
The bridge on.
Maple Street.
That, that, that seemed to be one way bridge.
So when you turn on, I think a lot of the view problem is when you turn on, you couldn't see across, if somebody was coming now, you can't see across, and we have a couple of wards that are loose, we gotta go back and work on that, and we cleaned the other side when we were there. And observed quite a few vehicles that were weighing above three thousand pounds pounding over that bridge while we were there working. So, gonna get new passenger only vehicle signs, you can happily read them, and I still gotta order those other signs. What we made the change on the direction of the travel on the bridge.
You had those signs are up?
I got one of them still. I haven't had a chance, but it's on my. But I wanna order some new, the passenger car only, because you can't really read them.
How, how's your hiring going, Jeremy?
I have an application here, I've had several people talk to me, uh, two applications, and one I guess you know about, the other one is a gentleman that I know, who my best friend has worked with, and he's a very experienced guy that's interested to come and work here. So I'm interested in talking to him and.
We've got all the applications for people that applied for your position too, I don't know if Don.
We already did that, yeah.
It's hard, I know the, the town offers what they can offer, but a lot of people, it's like they need a family insurance, or they want, they need to state the same issues I ran into in Danbury, that very good people that I've worked with or know what their abilities are, they need at least one of those things to, to do it and you know, I, I think I can, this, the gentleman's name is Chris, and I, I know him and I know his experience, but it's like, we don't, he's on the retirement system, he gets family insurance, but we would have to pay him a decent amount for him to be able to cover the family plan for him to come here, and I told him, you know, what we offered and what we could do, and I said I have to talk and see what we could do for pay to make it so that it would be feasible for him to have to pay for his family's insurance.
Well, we offer family. We have that.
But we have, you have to contribute to that.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent covered, but it's. His insurance is covered and then the, the, the remaining family members are discounting them out, it's.
The responsibility of the, um, worker would be for the family plan around five hundred dollars a month.
So this is like information I need, and all, you know, ask me to stop.
That is your resource right there.
Insurance.
Self trust.
Yes, it, 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 you know.
So what I, what I need to do to talk to him, bring him in, and even do, or I don't know the process.
The process is kind of, you do the interviewing, you talk to him, you talk to Don about him, you get someone you like, you come to the select board, you say I wanna hire this guy.
We don't need any of them. We don't need an interview.
So we would work out a discussion on where I'd like to have him for pay, and then I would tell him, and then he would come and talk to you.
Don knows the parameters that we're working on there, so, yeah. And then you just.
Christine, Alita, and Don have, I mean, I understand like ninety percent of this is similar, just different procedures and numbers, and I, I message them, and when they tell you, they send me a message, I answer them back, or if I need something, I tell them to try to make things better for the guys, and, and they both messaged me today, we had a great week, we got a lot of stuff done, everything was great. So they've, I've been right there working with them, we both, man and um, Tony got all pretty good with the black waste base warrants, both of us. You know, I'm right there dragging brush and doing all the stuff they're doing, and they said that's a total change for them. So I will continue, I mean, not every minute, because obviously I got like this much, but they do, and then I got that much more on top of that, but I will do everything I can to do as much with them, and when they need stuff, I said, write it down, and I said, I will trickle it in if it's something big, I'll have to ask and see if we can do it or add a list of things that were safety things we're gonna get, they got vests, they got new hard hats and chaps today, because you can't be five years old on a helmet and they're from twelve to fourteen years old, the helmets that were there, and I said, no, they're going in the garbage, because if we get the proper labor comes in, we will be in trouble. The torches are supposed to have anti-spark arrestors on them, there's none there, those have been ordered. On the top of the tanks is a yellow type of cap, it's like a can job. So if that tank tips over, it's like a torpedo, so a call may not see, and I said, we need those, it's not like I'm just going out for things that we don't need, these are things that we don't even have jack stands, if we lifted up the CV to work on it, as the lift cannot lift those up. It's only twelve thousand pound lift. Which we did get the lift operational yesterday, there was no oil in it. Nobody had put any oil in it, boy, those leaked out.
Do you guys remember having quite the conversation about those lifts?
Yeah, but I also seem to remember that it was a lot heavier than twelve thousand pounds.
It's right on the sticker.
No, I showed Don and I said.
No, no, I mean, the one that we discussed, due to the fact that it was gonna be lifting trucks.
Putting in for the additional one, but it's not, we didn't put the larger one in place, we just put the smaller one in place to be in.
I mean, if you had to pick up like, you drove that truck in and you had to pick up like the right front corner in the bathroom on the ground and you put some blocking, yes, I would feel safe to go under there and work on it, but as far as lifting it up in the air, no. Not gonna do it, and I would never ask them to do it. To pick up, if you had to help with one of the cruisers or something else, or put a piece of plywood and lift one along and was up to work on it, you know, it is very dandy. This is too bad that it wasn't just a little bit bigger, so then it could lift those, but it's what we got to work with, I'm thankful that we have that. All of the office, the break room, the bathroom, I've cleaned all that. People have came in and said, it's immaculate compared to what it was.
Can you get a price on that, um, garage door panel that's?
Yes, I was not impressed when I saw that with the Band-Aids stuck on it, like Band-Aids that go on your arm. And I told them flat out, if something gets damaged, tell me immediately, and I'll deal with it, if we can't fix it, we'll turn it to the insurance and we'll notify you that it was an accident, you know, something happened, let's, you know, be honest and do what we're supposed to do, and they said, no. AJ told me, said I did report it, and that's what I was told to do, was to put Band-Aids on it, so. Yes, I did. If we could get that panel, so trying to figure out how we could patch it, but it's like metal and foam and it's not really good for me.
You can't, you can't fix those things, let's say.
Just get a price from the door company to just come replace that panel.
Yeah.
And.
Like in the low one, even it'll be cheaper.
Uh, and you gotta wear more Band-Aids apparently, she.
And the other thing I talked to them about today, that other metal container that's down next to the salt building is maybe some tires and some, all kinds of stuff, and their grand storage container, the big long one.
That's the one that we bought.
Probably been there longer. To move that one up to the other one to get it away from the salt container and put it up off the ground like it should be. And then we would have our two containers gonna be organized, that other little building that's next to the salt, it just has barricades just bombarding in there, they're gonna be stacked up so that user friendly and we trickle one in, as soon as we get the truck back, the CV back, the first one, the headgear is gonna go on, we're gonna go through that whole truck, put everything on it, get the chain oiled up, and that will be done, and then the other one's gonna go get some recalls done, and then we're gonna do that one, so we're trickling in that stuff.
Where do you stand on, uh, winter sand?
I don't know, I thought that was on you guys, no idea, don't know anything about it yet.
We, yeah, we're talking and then you have a line on the salt.
Yeah, I'm also just waiting for the contract to come, the price, I don't know, salt contracts go from September to September. So like in the summer, if we know we need a little bit more, or we can fit a little bit more before the price changes, it's better off to get it, and then you need it for the sand pile anyway, the start, I mean, our sand pile is gonna be mixed.
Jeremy, I have, uh, green and state, I have one that came in where they grow, the other two have not.
Minerals? That's what I'm talking.
Okay.
That's what I felt, they give us, they all give you a miserable price, that's who I've dealt with for nine, more than nine years, right, with the city, and it's a good product. So we would have those two bays filled, and then we will need salt to mix with the sand, and then we will mix up the third bay so that it doesn't have ice and everything else on it, so if we have a nice storm, we have stuff already mixed, and then when it's good days, we will refill it.
Go back to my original question, though, we're nowhere close to getting a contractor to.
We do not have.
Screening sand yet. It's getting late now.
I didn't know that was on me, I thought I maybe could already figure that out, I didn't, I hadn't heard anything about it.
We, we've been discussing it, because we had three different options, if I remember correctly. One option was we hire a contractor just to deliver sand. Uh, the second option was that we take the crews, you know, highway crew, we mix the sand ourselves with what we have on site. And the third option was hiring a contracting crew to come in and use our sand and manufacture it right there.
Either the first or the third option, because the sec, the middle one, I don't have time.
Well, we said that already for you, so. Not, we didn't, we didn't wanna take the highway department crew off.
Don, yeah, that would eat up a serious amount of time.
Yeah.
Either we could get somebody to truck it in, or we can get somebody to come over and screen it.
Probably have to contract somebody to come in and screen what's in the pit out back. Simply because the budget isn't going to allow us to simply buy sand outright.
Yeah, moving forward, can the sand, as I'm understanding, and I have not had a ton of time to look through it, the sand and gravel is in the same line.
Correct.
Can it be moved so that they are not in the same line? It doesn't make sense to me. You're like A to Z different product that would be used for different reasons, combining them in the same line. We need a lot of gravel and we use a good amount of sand, I'm sure, because I'm familiar with most of the roads. It does not make sense for me to have them in the same line, and to justify what we would need for money, having them combined.
Good point, we'll talk to the finance director.
I thought it used to be.
I mean, if, if you had to buy four thousand dollars of sand, you'll cut it like forty five thousand dollars minimum.
Yeah, four thousand yards.
Yeah, four thousand, like ideally, what we've always tried to do, whether it's here or somewhere else is you make a ramp and you hope that you don't empty the whole entire pile, because if you do, then you're buying sand in the middle of the winter, and then you deal with all that. You, you wanna leave, it, it's not wasted money, I'm not, I'm not gonna say it the wrong way, the wrong word come out, but it's better to still have some left and not have to start the whole entire thing over. It's still gonna be there, and if you did have a bad year, you have it, but I've been here, so we had to do that twice, so you're taking really next year's sand is really in the two budgets, I'm sure it's similarly here, you don't wanna get into that position where in March or April that we're out of sand and we're having to eat into the next year's pile. Then it just snowballs from there, and we got to the point where we had so much sand that there's twelve thousand yards sitting there, well, we could move some money to gravel and not have to have so much for sand. Is what my experience is, it's a big sand pile is not wasted, because you have no idea. In a storm the rainstorms we've been having we can have six wheelers, nothing below, twenty, thirty loads, one truck of sand in one storm.
I don't, I don't. I don't think it's a big deal, just a separate to two, is it?
We'll look at it, it, it's a we can rename the lines.
Seen, seen the brother?
It, it's been, it's gone around a lot, so.
Yeah.
Kevin changed it, and.
Can't run our own money, we don't wanna do that.
We'll, let's, let's catch up on that next week, we'll.
Yeah.
You're trying to justify two opposite uses, why would you wanna?
Consolidate.
Gas and oil, gas and water, you get like, oil and water together, like, it doesn't make sense to me.
But it's solid, so.
Yeah, that just, I would have simply could do it, and that would help me to justify the amounts, I mean, obviously, if we're using our own sand, it wouldn't be as much, but if we didn't, that's what we'd be looking at for a number based upon, I know what the contractors around the garage delivered. The price on all that, the price of the gravel.
We're talking eight, eight and a half dollars a yard, right?
Then we could get it for that, but the other suppliers, we send ours, we send ours out to pitch, and give Dawn all that stuff that I brought with me of how we did, and not saying we have to do that, it's ideas, but the next closest bid was twenty five dollars, so you have to deliver it.
It's probably a present.
So we had eight, if we went and picked it up in fourteen for the contractor, then we gave the venture, or if he brought it. Well, we ended up having, we worked it in throughout the year, and we went and got it one ahead of time to locate it. Besides our trucks, I mean, we don't, it makes sense to do that, no matter what, and if we didn't have the sand it's just a, a salt shaker amount, there's nothing to help there.
So what do we need to do, the, back to the three, really only two solutions, I'm giving you sand. Is there something that's required of us now to say?
Jeremy and I need to get together, we'll bring the board three bits. Hopefully, and then decision, since it is a forty five thousand dollar.
How much sand we have out there that's not screened?
Probably less than a thousand yards without really any way to measure it, this.
Just a guess, that's what I'm asking.
I was a thousand for a day. Very minimal amount left out there, and there's next to nothing in the building. So you, thirty five hundred yards, I should probably do that much. Three thousand and, and take our chances, but I would not, I would like to put up at least that much.
Yeah, we, we definitely, we should go for four.
I'm sure you guys are thinking, where are we gonna get this money from? We do have still, if we're not doing the painting, we have a little bit extra left in that. That might get us through until January.
As long as we, as long as we don't spend four months at thirty one hundred dollars to rent a roller that sits stationary.
You will never have that happen to me, because I heard about that, and I.
We just, we just spent fourteen thousand dollars to have a roller sit down there at the garage and do absolutely not.
Don't need it, don't need to run.
Trust me, I'm with you, as soon as I found out, I sent it home, but.
Better, better gravel. Better, better gravel.
Yeah.
Low calcium mixed with it, we don't need to rent the roller. We don't need to own one either, that's leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Invoices from last year to try to figure out what our sand usage has been. That's what I figured, because it's gonna be a little different, the roads here, you know, we don't have maybe as many dirt roads, I don't know. Mile wise, if we had the same amount, but she can get more historically, she could probably.
Using a little bit less sand, if you're using more salt, which is three times, four times less, so.
The thing is that every, you know, everybody is under the assumption. That because you have a dirt road, you don't have to sand it. Dirt roads build up ice fast with asphalt roads.
I'm not even.
No, no, I'm just saying.
See, I know dirt roads, I know dirt roads with big rocks out front, you gotta drive around the house.
You got a big one in the ditch, right?
Um, did you notice your, your nuts and bolt bend?
Uh, I think we're good, you have anything else?
We actually, we actually have a contractor, if you get together with Don. That supplies nuts and bolts.
We've already gone through Kimball Midwest, we're going back to Tipco.
That's Tipco's, that's what I'm talking about.
Kimball Midwest.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I, I didn't mean to leave you out, I'd like to see Jeremy get together with Don. Put a small price list of what we're looking at. And then come, Don, come to the board and talk to us. So we're in the process, if everybody's all set, we're probably doing right, I make a motion that we adjourn. You get together with Don and you do everything?
Priceless.
For what?
Your filters, your oil, just a general idea of what it's gonna.
Some stuff that's under his limit, she didn't buy.
I'm not worried about his limit, I just want a general idea for our own information, what's gonna pass.
He, he needs this stuff. Right, so the procurement policy which we.
Bill and then you'll know how much it costs.
The procurement policy which we just authorized allows you to spend a thousand dollars. Up to a thousand dollars on the, on whatever you need.
Which on the high end is not much.
I know, but if you're, then if you're buying filters and don't spend a thousand dollars, then you're good with that and then a. A barrel of oil for less than a thousand dollars, you're good with that.
Yeah, and then you.
Correct our finance and then you can come up through me and then ultimately come up through the select works, we, we can get up to ten grand. Whether it involves. Pretty easily.
I think, I didn't see the bill, I know it came in and I'm pretty familiar, our backhoe is the same. It's probably in the tune of eight hundred dollars for the filters, for the backhoe.
Don, just get them.
Like everyone, the transmission, all that stuff, are we gonna change all that? No, but you need to have it there.
As long as there are individual invoices for less than a thousand dollars, you're good to go.
Yeah, pretty damn familiar with bolts, just different numbers.
That's fine.
I told them I'd have to text one of the selectmen, write a purchase order, call them.
Yeah, if any.
I have not seen that policy or my job.
You, Don will share it with you tomorrow morning.
My week has been long enough already, you know.
What, what do you need to connect?
Um, you never know, Saturday, Sunday, if it's storming out, it'll be over.
Well, that really starts Monday morning, he'll share that with you, how's that?
Do you want four tens?
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm working whenever I need to work, but that's what they're working.
Yeah, okay.
I usually get in about six o'clock and I leave. Five, five thirty, six, seven, whatever, so I'm more than putting in my time.
A company man, I like it.
Yeah, but don't forget when I'm gonna take off for two hours.
I, I reintroduce.
I'll second.
All the favor.